It is now six fifteen and we're going to go ahead and start Committee of the Whole. Okay. Um, we are now starting Committee of the Whole at six seventeen. Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye, present.
Felix.
Present.
Alderman Newsom is absent. Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donaworth is absent. Alderman Florian.
Present.
Hayes.
Present.
Bolton.
Present.
Guzman.
Present.
Uh, Mayor Taylor.
Present.
Okay, Madam Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. Um, can I have first and a second mo- um, for a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes from Monday, October seventh, twenty twenty-four? I need a first.
I so move.
Second.
Alderman Bolton. Alderman Florian was second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye. Um, anybody wanna talk from audience time on the, any issues that's on this agenda?
You do not have anyone signed up, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, item A, um, this is.
Uh, before we move forward, I'd like to put a motion to, uh, for last time, for item D, the ordinance amending various provisions of the Waukegan City Liquor Code Ordinance, eighteen zero four six regarding C-one licenses, to move it up to the, to the first to be heard.
Okay, can I get a second to that?
Second.
Second.
Okay, that was Alderman Felix. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Um, so we'll move item D up. This is an ordinance amending various provision of the, uh, Waukegan Liquor Control Ordinance and Ordinance eighteen dash zero dash forty-six regarding Class C-one licenses. Um, corporate counsel, would you like to do the slide on that?
Um, since we already had arguments last time, or do we need a refresher? I thought we could just go out and vote and call it a day.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna explain why we're talking about this again.
Oh, okay.
And then I was go- I was gonna run through the slides really quickly, 'cause I actually supplemented the slides to better explain.
Okay.
Okay. So, at the end of the, uh, after the discussion on, uh, a month ago, where there was a vote of, I believe it was, uh, it was basically.
Five, four.
It was five, four, um, to vote down referring this up to the, the, the city council. Alderman Donaworth, uh, after the close of the committee, came back and expressed that he had had a misunderstanding about this, um, and that he wanted to further discuss it. Traditionally, when, um, someone wants to bring up an item that is, um, that, that has been considered by a public body, um, you need a, a motion to reconsider. A motion to reconsider can only be brought by someone from the side that prevailed, um, in this case, the noes, uh, and must be made at either that meeting or the following meeting. In this case, um, the Committee of the Whole is a, an informal body, and, a body for more informal consideration. And, um, so the mayor and I, uh, discussed this, and, um, e- even if the ruling had been that, um, Alderman Donaworth's motion was, uh, not, not, uh, not sufficient to generate a motion to reconsider, and, and he's not here today, um, this could be placed back on the committee's agenda for further discussion. Uh, and so, that's why we're here tonight to further discuss it. I was going to, uh, run through and clarify, 'cause I think there was, there was some confusion, uh, as indicated by Alderman Donaworth's questions, and it is also because liquor licenses are confusing. So, Alderman Guzman, if you're okay, I would like to run through these slides one more time.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so Alderman Guzman proposes amendments to the Waukegan Liquor Control Ordinance and Ordinance eighteen oh forty-six. Uh, there are three things that were discussed. An amendment to section three fourteen to provide an exception to the automatic reduction of available licenses in cases where a new entity had acquired or assumed ownership of a licensed premises or the business operations of a licensee, to allow the purchasing entity to apply for and acquire a new license for the premises without requiring, going to the city council for a vote. Uh, amend section thirty-five fifty-five to reduce the application fee for a licensed applicant seeking to assume ownership or operation of existing licensed premises, and then finally, remove the prohibition on the issuance of new C-one licenses to parties that acquire or assume ownership of one of the original seven C-one licenses. So I'm gonna go through each of those, tell you what the current law is, and tell you what the proposal to change it is. Current ordinance, um, this is, this is the law right now. For existing licenses, um, section three fourteen deals with this. Existing licenses sub-A, uh, sections three and four. Upon the lapse of any license through non-renewal, relinquishment, or any other such reason, such license shall automatically be void. In other words, once a license is, um, has not been renewed, has been revoked, um, it's gone. Um, it cannot be transferred to anyone else. The section, the, the second subsection, upon any license becoming forfeited, void, or revoked, regardless of the reason, the number of available licenses in that classification shall automatically and immediately be reduced by one. So, when we talk about a license being given up, that license becomes void. We're not talking about changing that, but the issue is, is that the number of available licenses under our current code automatically reduces by one, and the only way you can raise it by one is if the city council votes on it. Here is the proposed amendment. Um, this would add a new subsection that creates an exception to that automatic reduction. For businesses that basically purchase, um, or assume ownership of an existing licensed premises. In the event that a license or licensed premises in good standing is acquired by a bona fide purchaser who applies for a license of the same classification for the existing licensed premises within one month after the acquisition, the purchaser will not be required to petition the city council to create a new license within that classification. If the purchaser does not complete the application process within the required time, or does not qualify for a license, the number of available licenses will be reduced in accordance with se- with subsection A four. So the effect of this is that, um, if a business is acquired by a new entity, rather than them having to come back to the city council to get a new license created, they would apply for the license, they would go through the full license application process, they would still have to complete the background check, they would still have to satisfy all the requirements. But, um, at the s- but, the city council would not basically be able to, um, deny them simply because they do, because they don't think that it's appropriate to have another license in this location. That is the proposed amendment. The next slide. This establishes a lower fee for the application by applicants assuming operation of ownership. This is if you're assuming application of ownership during a license period. Um, right now, um, if someone comes in for a new license, even if they're taking over an existing business, the total is about thirteen hundred dollars. Um, what Alderman Guzman has proposed is that, um, the license fee, um, would be, um, five hundred dollars to assume the, uh, to assume a license.
No, 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 no. I think you're confused on that. That's on top of the license.
Okay, so wait, so, so what you would say is that all those costs that are up there on the, on the existing fees would stay the same, and that this license would be in addition to that?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so that's for clarity.
Basic convenience fee.
Thank you for cl- thank you for clarifying that. Okay. The next, next slide, please. Okay, so this was, this is where, um, this is ju- there's a specific class of licenses, C-one licenses. These were created back in two thousand eighteen. They were to address an issue that had arose with, specifically with gas stations that had liquor licenses that allowed not only the sale of beer and wine, but also spirits. In other words, high-proof liquor. Um, there was a specific issue that arose that Alderman Newsom described, which was these single-shot bottles, uh, plastic and glass bottles of a small size, that were being, um, consumed immediately off premises, and areas around gas stations were being littered with these. Um, in addition, there were issues with loitering, um, and everything else you can, uh, imagine that would come around with basically public drunkenness, public drinking and loitering, uh, almost all directly related to the sale of these single-shot bottles. The city's solution at the time was to create a new subclass, um, for gas, gasoline stations that were allowed to still sell beer, wine, and spirits, but they were limited to seven locations that at the time, as of two thousand eighteen, that were selling, and more than that, um, no other, no other, um, locations could be approved, and the licenses for these locations could not be transferred. Now, what has been the practice is that some of these li- some of these gasoline stations, filling stations, when they are sold, they are not allowed to keep their C-one license, but they are allowed to apply for an F-one license, I believe is the classification. Someone nod, someone give me, yes. Okay, an F-one license, which does allow the, uh, gas station to continue to sell beer and wine, but they have to stop selling spirits. Uh, what Alderman Guzman, next slide, please, has proposed is that of the, um, of the seven Class C-one licenses that remain available, um, they are only the ones that would be, uh, that would remain, uh, or that currently have C-one licenses, and that those could be transferred to a new owner, uh, but of course, that entity would have to first apply for and, uh, qualify for a local license. I hope that that clarifies what the, the scope of the proposed amendments are a little bit better.
Oh, and, uh, and only those. So basically, nothing is new, created, so it would still be those seven, and they may still be, uh, still comply with, uh, the guidelines. I mean, no excessive, uh, no excessive police calls and so on and so forth, uh, no issues with the place, and it's up to the city. The, the city decides, okay, and states, okay, so we've haven't had no problems with this place, so you can actually move forward with the application. So if the city says no, then it's a no.
I just wanna add two things to that. One is, I don't know what you mean by excessive police calls. Is that one call, is that five calls? What's the number that's gonna be associated with that? And did those calls have to be specifically related to the selling of liquor? What happens, you know, if there was a burglary there? Does that count towards your liquor license, then? Um, so that, we need to clarify, that's way too vague to leave that where there's no number, what the police calls are. But the other part of this is why this was done historically is because neighborhoods were being inundated with litter from these little bottles. It was making the neighborhoods look poor. Um, it was leading to a lot of public intoxication during the daytime. So, the whole idea of setting this up was to wean that out over time. And now, if you decide to do that, you're going against what former Alderman felt was an important part of that. Um, and how do you determine, I guess the, the question is, if you give this to them, someone buying these gas stations, they're not paying more for the gas station, the liquor license is transferable, and the only thing that's costing them is an extra five hundred dollars plus the liquor license when they renew. So, I don't know that that's gonna get rid of the problem with the small bottles. Does that make sense?
So, I mean, you guys agreed to have seven. I'm not creating anymore, so there's no more gonna be created. So there's no more, only the seven and seven.
But when it was seven, it was as they were sold, they would be phased out.
Okay, so what has happened with the complaints since then? How many years ago did this happen? So it's still the same thing. I mean, so they could be in business for another twenty, thirty years, and it's still the same thing. These sevens can still be seven. So there is, there could be no change for thirty years, or twenty, or however long they decide to retire. So that's, that's.
Most of them would change within a ten-year period, and that's why it was set up. Let them have time to phase out. Um, but that's, that's what was decided at a former time. Alderman Florian?
Um, so my question is also, Alderman Guzman, you keep saying, you know, no calls, it's an established business, it's, you know, in good standing. Just because you currently run a good business doesn't have anything to do with the person who buys it from you. So I don't, I don't understand why that has any, you know, I ru- I've been running my business for twenty-six years, I'm sorry, thirty-six years, by my, by myself mostly. When, when I go to retire, I, just because I've done things a certain way, there's no guarantee the person that takes over for me is gonna do things the same. So I don't understand why the current owners, um, you know, business sense has anything to do with saying whether we're gonna let them sell it to someone, because you have no idea how someone else who takes over. Look, you've, you've only been here a year and a half, and look at how many people have come to us for a liquor license that we've had to turn away, because their application had errors in it, had flaws in it, had situations where they didn't even qualify to get a liquor license. And I don't feel we should put that decision-making on our staff. Their job is to fill, you know, make sure the paperwork is filled out. It's not their job to make that decision, it's ours. That's why liquor licenses have always come to city council, and you can see how many mistakes we catch when they come here. The other problem I have, when Stu was reading, he talked about bona fide, um, buyers, or, or whatever, that, that doesn't have anything to do with their, um, being a, a, um, any kind of vetting on that person, correct? I mean, that's just saying it's a legitimate buyer.
Yeah, that, that's correct. It's not, I mean, the, a bona fide purchaser just simply is that this is a, a going concern that is able to, and we've seen a purchase agreement and those things. It has nothing to do with their, their quality as an applicant, that's a separate issue.
Right.
But what you're.
And then, I, I'm not done yet, please, thank you. Um, and then, I, my other question, Stu, is, is this even legal to do this, according to the liquor laws of the state of Illinois? For us to just, I mean, in essence, we're kind of transferring a license from one individual to another without approving it at city council?
Um, actually, I thought this question was answered last time.
I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to Stu.
I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to Stu. Stu, can you answer that question, please?
The answer is that we're not, we're, and I, I wrote this in a way that is very explicitly not transferring a license. It is basically keeping an available license open for another applicant to come in, that applicant would have to qualify for their own individual license. In the same way that we cannot transfer, I cannot transfer my driver's license to my daughter, um, you know, that, that, there are certain licenses and privileges that cannot be transferred. So, um, if someone came in and they didn't pass the background check, they didn't meet the qualifications, they could not, uh, what this does is, it basically allows an available license to remain available for the specific location for a limited period of time if a new applicant who has purchased the property or the business comes in. Um, it is, it is an exception to a control that we, we recommend always be in place. Um, it is a limited exception by design, and it is within, so it is legal, but it is within you, your decision whether you want to create the specific exception.
And this is only for this class of licenses, not for bars, restaurants, or other classes?
No. So, okay.
No, it's not, or?
But I, I will explain, because the amendments that Alderman Guzman has proposed, there are a few generally applicable ones, the ones that I've talked about at the very beginning. If we can flip back, uh, to. One more, okay. Um, the amendment that would allow someone coming in to, if they purchase a licensed business and want to continue operating that licensed business with the same license classification, not changing the license classification, the automatic reduction in the number of, of licenses would not kick in. That person would still need to qualify, and they would need to do it in a timely fashion. This doesn't mean that like if something sticks out there for six months, if it goes, sticks out for six months, it's gone. But. So, the way it is written is that, um, same for classification, within one month after, they have to apply within one month after acquisition. Okay, if the purchaser does not complete the application process within the required time, or does not qualify for a license, the number of available licenses will be reduced in accordance with section. That, uh, the, that's, you know, I, I, I was asked to prepare draft language. We tried to make it as, whenever we do this, I try to make the language as a closer fit to what you, you all ask me to do, and do no more or no less. That's always my goal.
Okay. So my last comment is, Alderman Donaworth is the one who asked to bring this back up, and he's not even here tonight, and I think we should wait until he's here to finish discussing this. Um, do you wanna, did you wanna hold it, or?
Well, we can finish talking about it and then.
Alderman Turner?
Yeah, I'm, um, I'm not clear on the necessity or the rationale behind the five hu- additional five hundred dollar fee. Uh, Alderman Guzman? Alderman Guzman? Can you speak again to the, why you want another, an additional five hundred dollar fee above and beyond the licensing fee?
I just feel it's a convenience fee, uh, so you, uh, you won't have to go and wait for the three-month, uh, or four-month, uh, process of actually obtaining a liquor license and going through this whole brouhaha, just like it's going now. Month after month after month after month, putting it on hold, and, uh, I mean, I'm giving you a, a fast track. Within one month, you get your liquor license and you're good to go.
Well, for most applicants, they do, but we have a number that don't complete the application correctly, that it is sent back for, um, they redo, you're saying like a month is a reasonable time? No, we get people who buy a business and don't report that until it's time to renew. We've had that happen quite a lot. Um, the reason that things are sent back on liquor applications is because they have not completed the package completely. They come and learn about it through, at the licensing department, and they still don't fill out the paperwork correctly.
All right, two, two things to that point, Mayor. Maybe, maybe, how about sixty days? Would that be reasonable? A sixty-day window, one, and two, I, I, I'm not supportive of this five hundred dollar fee. I think, you know, you're al- they're already paying a licensing, all of those licensing fees, and then you're gonna tack on a five hundred just because you're applying to a license that already exists, so that, that would be my exception.
That that might do is bring them in, because whether you make it thirty days or sixty days, they don't report it anyway. So, the only thing that you can say the five hundred dollar fee may do is bring them into the licensing department, because they may know they owe money.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I think, Mayor, your point was that a lot of the time when we see these dragged-out processes, staff is working with these applicants, and staff is trying to get the information from these applicants. These applicants are often small businesses, they, they may not have all the information, but the, staff can't do their vetting until they actually have received all the information. So there's often a lot of back and forth that occurs, even when someone, even if you create a fast track, it's not gonna be one, it may not be one month, and it will have nothing to do with staff's efforts. I can guarantee that. It'll just.
That's the thing that I think people up here don't understand, is what happens when people don't get immediately what they want. They run to you guys and complain, but often they haven't come and talked to the department and listened to the direction that they've said that. We have it with special events, we have it with everything, permitting process. Um, one of the things we changed with permits is that contractors would notoriously say, "Oh, I submitted three weeks ago and I've never," you know, the city, I'm waiting for them to respond. Alderman Newsom herself had this problem with her contractor. When she asked, the contractor had only submitted to us the day before Alderman Newsom talked to us, not the three weeks before that the contractor told her. So we've kinda changed her portal that both owner and the contractor have to be on there, because people are not always telling everybody the whole story, and this happens continually with liquor licenses, that, you know, it's maybe your first time getting a liquor license, and you don't understand the process, and you think, "I come down to city hall, I pay it, boom, I'm done." That's not how it works. All the information has to be on the application so that we can successfully submit, you know, for the, the background checks and all of that. We get to the process sometimes, and they don't show up to do the fingerprinting. And then, you know, they're like, "Well, we're waiting for you." No, we're waiting for you to go and get the fingerprints done. That's part of the application, and it tells you that. So, I don't feel like there's as much problem with the application process as people think, but I think transferring a license can open up things that, you know, we don't know about then, until they come to renew, that they've changed ownership, or something else has happened. Alderman Hayes?
Thank you. Alderman, uh, Felix, did you have a question? I saw your hand up before mine.
Uh, there was a comment, but you can go ahead.
All right, thanks. So, a couple of concerns here. One of, but, just one quick question about the language, counsel. Um, it says that the application must be completed within thirty days, right? So, one of my concerns here is that somebody submits an incomplete application or a placeholder application on the twenty-ninth day, and then here we are stringing this thing out for another couple of months, and it's the same situation that we're now trying to avoid is taking place, but they're getting the benefit of not having to come before council. So, is it true that the application must be completed and ruled on within thirty days, or else they don't qualify for this benefit?
That was the intent when I drafted it, and one of the things that I think we wanted to make clear was that if you're thinking of selling your business, the person who's purchasing it should get this process started well beforehand. Um, and that, but that is, you know, that would require communication as well.
So, I agree, I didn't mean to cut you off, Stu. Is, I agree with, you know, a, a compressed timeframe to make this happen. I don't agree with this change to begin with. If it were to go through, then I agree with a compressed timeframe. Um, so, a couple of concerns. Uh, Stu, I think you, you had used a word that I think is really important here, which is privilege. Uh, it is a privilege, not a right, to sell alcohol in the city of Waukegan. And if somebody can just submit paperwork and get a liquor license, it feels a little bit more, um, like it's owed to them, as opposed to a burden that they carry, right? We all have issues in our wards, we all have different businesses, many of which operate very well, some of which can ruin it for everyone else. And we need to be able to have those people come before city council and answer to us, and we answer to them. Because what's most important here is that we answer to all the residents in the city of Waukegan, right? So when there's an issue with a business that is not conducting itself appropriately, we have to answer for that business's misdeeds. In order for us to be able to answer for that, in order for us to be responsible for that, as we should be as elected officials, we should have the final say on whether they're approved or not. So, it is our responsibility to approve them, and then it's the residents' responsibility to hold our feet to the fire if we approve somebody who should not have been approved. It is not the employee's job to make that final decision. Now, this isn't a knockabout on any city employee, but it is ripe for misconduct. It is ripe for, ripe for undue pressure to be put on certain, uh, employees of the city, and I think that that is unfair to put that on the employees of the city to do that. So I think that the, the final say should stick with city council. I don't see why we should fast-track these. I don't see why we should give any subsequent owner, who may have never done business in the city of Waukegan before, the benefit of not having to complete their application and come before us for final questions and approvals. That is the process, that is the way that it has been, and that is the way that is working now. It may take a little bit longer, maybe they should start their application process earlier. I don't think that we should weaken our current rule. That's what an exception is, an exception to the rule, even if it's a limited exception, ultimately carves out and weakens the whole, and that's what we'd be doing here. So, I don't see why. Ultimately, I suspect this is just to benefit one or two businesses. This isn't a benefit to the city as a whole, this is the benefit of a couple of businesses, and we would be weakening the rule that applies to everybody to carve out for just a couple of businesses. So, I have a few more points, but that's a tirade on that one, if anybody wants to chime in on that.
I, I'd like to, if I may, just very briefly to direct you. All right. So, Tom, as usual, makes some excellent points, and maybe we should just incorporate what you're suggesting. what you're suggesting into the revisions, that the new licensee must come before the council to get approval. Maybe we say the application process should be started within one month, not completed, and we don't put a, a cap on that completion timeline. Would that maybe satisfy what your concerns are, Tom?
My primary concern is people not coming before city council to get, to get that privilege. Yeah, but that's how it is now. And I, I think this, this, the biggest component of this amendment is to prevent people from having to come before city council. And that's what I, I think it would be a massive disservice to other business owners and the residents of the city if they didn't have to come before city council to get approval for something as important as a liquor license. So, the timeframe is one thing, and, but before we even get to the, I don't, I think it's a non-issue if, if we don't get past the first issue, which is, should the purchaser of a business that sells alcohol be permitted to circumvent or make an end-run around the requirement that they come before city council and get approval to sell alcohol?
I never understood that to be the intent or, or the practice.
Well, I think the language up there says, um, let's see, a month after acquisition, where is it? Somebody help me out here.
Whoever zoom, whoever was able to zoom in previously, if he can zoom in on that language.
The purchaser will not be required to petition the city council to create a new license. Yeah, right, that's concerning. Yeah, we don't want that.
They go, they, they apply for the license and come before the council. Easy peasy. The key point is that the license continues to exist post-sell or relinquishment by the, the current owner. That's, that's the problem.
Well, that's what we can't, that's actually what we can't do by law. You can't transfer, you can't transfer a local license, and you can't transfer a state license. And so, what, what we've seen is, and I, and I think, you know, we've seen this sometimes where a business is acquired and they want to keep selling, they want to keep selling in the interim. Grocery stores do this. There are times where we have actually accommodated that by the fact that they, the two parties actually enter into a management agreement where one basically says, okay, I'm selling you the business, but I'm going to keep running it, and they keep the li, the original guy keeps the, the liability. They maintain the drang shop insurance. That is legal to do. And we've worked, we've accommodated some businesses that have, that have needed to do that. But what we always want is to make sure that there is a party that is liable for this, and that actually cares if they get, you know, if someone sells to minors, that there's drang shop insurance, that those things. So we do, we do accommodate those things on a case-by-case basis. But the best way to do it is come in nice and early, tell us who you are, and then get the city's, council's approval. Because that, really, your ability to create new licenses is your only way, that's really, that is, that is your sole power, and it's, it's an important and heavy power, but it is the, the most important power you have in controlling liquor licensees.
I, I think it can be distilled down to that. That's really helpful, Stu, is that we all answer to all the residents of the city of Waukegan, and therefore, those selling alcohol should answer to us. Because whatever their misdeeds are, we have to go out and answer to the public for those.
I agree.
So, I think we have to keep that hierarchy in place.
Alderman Martinez, but I think Alderman Felix had his hand up first, okay.
Yeah, and then, then Martinez can go. So, Stu, if I have this correct, the, one, I think the most important thing that I think that Alderman Guzman is proposing here is that that number doesn't change for this specific type of license, and it stays there, right? I mean, we still...
There's two parts, and this is, this is what I was trying to get at, that this change that's up on the screen is for all licenses. The one that is kind of the third part only applies to class C-1 licenses. And previously, I had asked Alderman Guzman if he wanted to split these up, because I think that whether you want class C-1 licenses to go away as they amortize, as businesses go to business, I think that's a separate discussion from whether you want transferees to come back to the city council.
Because we, I mean, that's not a huge change, right? I mean, for example, we keep it how you drafted it, but just say, hey, okay, um, they, they should still come in, once, once they're, they're gone through processing, they should still come in and go, it should go up to vote? Because you still have to get a license, right?
Okay, yes. If you think that the city council should approve a license for someone who has acquired a business where there's an existing license, then this amendment is not necessary. This particular one that's up on the screen. And I, here, I'll... In your packet, the ordinance has three exhibits, and exhibits A, B, and C. And exhibit A is not necessary if you want people to come back to the city council. Exhibit C, which deals with those class C-1 licenses, the gas one, that's a separate issue, and that could still be debated separately if you want to address that. And I'll bring him over to you.
I think we could vote, potentially, we could vote on A tonight if people want to have the city council have the final say on whether a liquor license should be approved to stay with the city council.
Okay, I'm going to have Alderman Martinez talk, and then what I'm going to suggest is that we send this to corporate council to separate and make it easier for you to understand, because there's a lot to absorb in this one. Alderman Martinez?
Right, and I just want to say, I mean, there's a lot of pros and cons to this, I mean, we can go back and forth, but I'm going to go in and put a motion to postpone this, or to hold till we get the other Alderman's in here, and then we can discuss it further.
I will second that, yeah.
Okay. So, is everybody, well, I guess...
So, technically, a motion to hold over, which, you know, does not require a second, it can be overturned, but basically what we would be doing is holding this over not for two weeks, but until the next time, that basically for four weeks, because we keep alternating between the revenue allocation project and, and this during committee of the whole. But this would be brought back, not this, not the next committee of the whole, but the following one, when we have a full complement...
That's fine, that's fine.
That's fine.
So you would separate all the different moving parts?
We, we're going to hold it another month?
All the dynamics.
In a month, because we have to...
For our next committee of the whole, right? Basically.
That was supposed to be... We should do, if we got three other, four other lineups, we should...
That's something that they have to decide on.
Yes, please.
Okay, well, we can, we can hold this over, and one of the things that I, I think the Alderman could discuss with the mayor is if they want to block out more time, you know, we, these committees of the whole, they, they end up taking, because you guys have important discussions here, this is, this is, this is important stuff, they do take, they are taking about an hour. So, the city council would have to kind of budget its time and figure out when they would want to discuss this again. But you could hold this over basically until the next time we discuss legislative proposals by the city council.
Fine with me?
Okay, with that said, I think we're going to adjourn this so that everybody has a chance to go to the restroom, and then we're going to go ahead and start our city council meeting at 7:00. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Second, I'm sorry, who was second? Alderman Guzman?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, see you at 7 o'clock.